Welcome to our April 9th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. Do please rise and join me in a pledge.
Let's lead the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Okay.
No, it's funny. Let me get out.
I'll get you out. Don't worry.
Throw you over the table.
Nicole, would you please take the attendance?
Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Paul Chardini, absent. Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Anthony Sutton.
Here.
Christopher Zabardo.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda, the minutes from the March 12th, 2025 meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept them as they were presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a time extension for the New York State Police Headquarters in the Somers, in the Somers Fire District. The address is 295 Route 100 subdivision, and this is based on Resolution Number 2024-05, Town Map 17 dot 18, 17 dot 18 dash one dash 1.2. For the record, this is a request from the Somers Fire District Board of Commissioners for a 90-day time extension from May 3rd, 2025 up to and including July 31st, 2025, for approval, for approved preliminary flat signature by the Planning Board Chairman to meet the conditions of approval. And like I said, it's Resolution 2024-05. For the record, the reason that we have to, it's not quite a 90 days because time would run out in our meeting in August, their extension would run out. So we have to just do it from May 3rd up to and including July 31st, 2025. Make a motion, will we accept this time extension?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just need to recuse myself.
Okay. You get that, Nicole? Okay. Next is Trailside Estates at Somers. Site plan approval, application, excuse me, site plan application and preliminary subdivision of application at Reynolds Drive. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sean Carney of Carney Realty Development Group. Here tonight with Rich Williams, Insight Engineering. I apologize I missed the site walk last month, but I'm glad to hear that it went well. I'll pass it over to Rich to give the board just a brief update. There's not too many updates this month as we're putting together our next submission for next month's meeting.
You've already overthrown Dad, huh? Good for you.
It's kind of work in progress.
So yeah, since our site walk and good evening, Rich Williams with Insight Engineering. Not much to report, other than we did receive the most recent memo from Woodard and Kern. We are working on responses and we intend on submitting for the April 28th resubmission. So other than that, we're really here to listen to you and any feedback you have. Site walk.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from planning and engineering comments first.
Yeah, so Rich, we had submitted a review memo. weren't a whole lot of comments, but I think there were a couple that kind of stood out. And you don't have to respond tonight, but it just, just so the board is aware that the community center, the proposed community center, there was discussion in the submission, the initial submission about when that would come online. And I think there should be some additional discussion with the town relative to when that occurs, whether, you know, it's, it's obviously, I think, expecting it as part of the first phase out of a six-phase construction schedule may be unrealistic from the applicant's contention. But at some point, it needs to be part of the overall community. So just consider that. And then I know that there were some discussions at the last meeting with respect to whether it's oriented one way or the other, and how that it may affect the provision of parking, which was also some of our comments. But other than that, I think that that kind of highlights the comments that are the concerns that I had with respect to the application at this point.
Steve?
We issued a review memo on this just a couple hours ago. So I assume that no one has had a chance to review that yet. We've certainly worked with this owner and this engineer on many other projects. And so I don't think that they'll be surprised by any of our comments. We have some detailed comments about stormwater, about wastewater and water provisions, but really relating to some details in the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan and water and sewer engineer reports that largely reflect comments that we had provided to the applicant previously during the seeker process that we want to let the applicant know that they would need to address at some time, and that time is starting to come with this application. So we don't see any critical flaws yet at this point, but have requested some additional information for the engineering review.
Board member comments or questions? Maybe I should just mention, for the record, the town board is the lead agency on that, but we will be doing the site plan review.
Correct.
So everybody, just so everybody knows, at some point in time, I assume we're going to have a public hearing at some point in time.
Yeah, I think depending on, depending on the extent of the responses to the comments provided to the applicant with their next submission, we'll see how extensive they are. And at that point, you can make a decision as to whether to hold a public hearing at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think I would feel more comfortable waiting for them to come back with responses.
And for sure.
There were, as you know, there were a number of comments from the watershed inspector general who reviewed this, and I think you got comments from them, from the open space committee, along with comments from Mr. Robbins and myself. So I think when they have an opportunity to respond to all of those and with the next submission, then we can make an evaluation at that time.
If we're ready, right?
Yes.
Any board member questions, comments? Give them some more homework, no?
I mean, there's not a lot in front of us yet, and the site walk was definitely helpful for us to understand the magnitude of this project. It's a large swath of land that's going to be developed for 81 homes, right?
Yes.
So, but without us reviewing too much, I think they need to answer out some of the questions and some of the comments from the other boards and committees. And then we'll, I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions for you guys when we see all that data.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is 25 Route 116, NMB Properties LLC. It's a request for open development area designation. And for the record, it's Town Map 17 dot 12 dash 2 dash 5. This was a referral from the town board. And the applicant is proposing the development of a single-family residence on 13.5 acres, five, seven acre parcel of land that's vacant, and it's on Town Map 17 dash 12 dash 2 dash 5. The residents will gain access over a common driveway that connects with Route 116 and serves two other of the residential lots. This access triggers the need for the open development area designation consistent with the requirements of Town Law, Section 280-A. And for the record, the property is located at 25 Route 116 and is in an R40 zoning. Good evening.
Good evening. Jamie Spleen of Hogan Rossi and Legori and Tom Allen is also here with Bibbo Associates for the project. So as you stated, this is a 280A referral from the town board. The only reason that we're in front of your board is because of the access over the common driveway. The property doesn't front directly on a main, on a town road. And as such, no building permit can be issued before either an open area designation or a further variance. And this matter was referred to this board by the town board, who ultimately has to make the determination of the open area designation, but they look for your comments and recommendations. I know after we were here last time that you went on to a site visit. My understanding is that went pretty well. It's a, as indicated, it's a 13-plus acre lot that'll be receiving access over a common driveway, partial, a part of which is already developed. I know we received some comments from the Fire Bureau, which will all be addressed when these, this matter is worked out through the engineering department and the building department. We couldn't, unfortunately, we couldn't make any changes to the plans after receiving that, as it was a pretty short turnaround time. But we will be working with those departments and making any required edits. I know one of them was that it be 13 foot. I think only a portion of the driveway shown is less than 13 foot. So of course, we can work that all out. But at this time, we would just be looking for a recommendation to the town board.
Dave and Steve?
The only, I guess, question right now is you've been on a site walk, you've looked at the property, you have the application files before you. If you have any recommendations, we could certainly put that in a memo form and provide that to the town board for their consideration. We would also include the review memo from the Bureau of Fire Prevention with respect to their comments as part of that correspondence back to the town board.
No engine comments on this?
Board member comments? Anything that you want to put in on memo to the town board? No?
No. No. Also, you know, the site walk was, as you said, it was successful. We got to see the layout and what the initial concept is to do this, you know, this, this project. I don't think we have too much to comment on.
No.
I think it's very straightforward.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess the only recommendation, just make sure that that, at one part, it's widened to 13 feet.
Yeah, we were just asked that we're on the town board agenda for tomorrow.
Okay.
For the town board for their agenda tomorrow.
So we can, we can certainly turn something around.
Get a memo in the morning.
To the, to the town board.
That they'll have available for tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to?
Thank you.
Motion for you to do that?
I don't know that you need to. I think it's, the record will reflect that you've had this discussion. And we can certainly take those comments and provide them to the, to the town board, unless, Michael, you?
I agree. I don't think it requires a motion to author a memo. You're just, you're advising the town board based on your experience and expertise as the planning board members. So it's not required.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda is 23 and 25 Hilltop Road. It's an application for steep slope protection, wetland and water course protection, stormwater management and erosion and sediment control, and tree removal permits. It's, for the record, Town Map 37 dot 11 dash 1, dash 1.1, and 1.2. This project proposes the construction of two single-family homes with septic and well to extend the common driveway, which part of was previously installed as approved under Resolution Number 91 dash 6 and related stormwater improvements and remain individual driveways. The properties are located at 23 and 25, excuse me, Hilltop Road and R80 zoning district. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Sean Peters with H2M Architects and Engineers. I'm here on behalf of Martin Parenti, who is the developer and applicant for the project. I'd like to just give a broad overview of the background of this site and then touch on some of the proposed improvements. So just so that the board is aware, and I believe it was mentioned, these two lots are part of a previously approved subdivision that was filed with the county back in 1991. Mr. Parenti is looking to develop two single-family homes on the site. As part of that development, it would include an onsite wells, septic systems, and a shared driveway, which will utilize the easement that was included in that 1991 approval. The first step that was taken on the site was we did engage with Westchester County Health Department to obtain approvals for the onsite treatment system. And after that was completed, Mr. Parenti reached out to the town and was advised that a number of permits were needed from the town, you know, steep slopes, wetlands, trees, and stormwater management, erosion, sediment control. So just to give a broad overview, the plan that you're seeing here right now is the existing conditions of the site and also the proposed tree removals. The one other thing that I wanted to note on this plan was that you can see in the center of the plan, there's an existing onsite stream, which is bordered by wetlands, which are obviously regulated by your board and also the DUC. We did have the DUC out onsite and they did delineate the wetlands, and we have filed a freshwaterland permit application with them, so that process is ongoing. The good thing about that with the D, with BUC and the wetlands is that the existing site, or at the time of the subdivision, was improved with a shared driveway and a culvert crossing, which extends just past the stream. So there's going to be no need to physically disturb any of the wetlands, but there will, however, be some disturbance within the buffer area. As far as tree removals go, we are looking to limit the amount of tree removals to the greatest extent practical. I know there is a fair number of trees which are going to be removed as part of this project. It is a heavily wooded site. Full transparency to the board, Mr. Parenti, in addition to developing this site, is looking to, you know, live, I don't want to say retire, but you know, live on one, live on one of these properties. So he's invested in, you know, maintaining the natural state of the site and maintaining the privacy and screening of the lots and utilizing that existed wooded area. In our conversations, he's expressed that based on what I'm showing for the tree removals, if there's any availability during construction to even maintain some of those trees that are called for, for removal, he'd like to maintain trees to the greatest extent practical. So I just wanted to make that point. I'm going to move over to the steep slopes. So what you're seeing here is the existing conditions on the site. So within the 25-foot buffer area of the disturbance area, obviously, there's a number of steep slopes. Perhaps that's part of the reason why this site wasn't originally developed back in 1991. We are looking to, in the proposed conditions. Here, I can go into the area.
Would you read us the percentages for the cops?
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to? For the existing, the steep slopes from 15 to 25% is about 66,000 square feet. For the, for the slopes from 25 to 35%, it's about 33,000. And then for slopes above 35%, it's about 21,000. And that also includes the 25-foot buffer area, so not all of those areas are going to be disturbed.
So you were reading gray, green, then orange?
Yeah.
Just so we could kind of map them to what we're seeing on the?
Yeah, yeah. I think there was, the steep slopes, and then just to compare.
Watching at home, so.
Okay, yeah. And then for the proposed conditions, the steep slopes from 15 to 25%, which would be the gray hatch area, that's going from 66,000 to 33,000 square feet. And the proposed, the slopes from 25 to 33% are going from 33,000 square feet to 16,000 square feet. And then the orange hatched area, which is the slopes greater than 35% goes from 21,000 to 47,000. And overall, the total change on the site, steep slope areas, is going to be reduced by about 23,000 square feet. So to summarize that, there is an overall reduction in the steep slopes from pre to post, and that results in the grading needed for the proposed improvements where the dwellings are going. There is an increase in some of the areas that are above 35%. And those are areas that are along where the stormwater management practices are and adjacent to where proposed improvements are in those areas. The project does propose to install steep slope matting, slope stabilization matting, to help mitigate those impacts. But we do understand that this site is rather steep. So we're looking to implement erosion sediment control measures to the maximum extent practical to address those areas. The other thing I wanted to note with the proposed conditions is that the driveway is going to be cutting through a fairly steep area. However, with the grading that's proposed, no areas of the driveway will exceed 14%, which is compliant with your code. So I just wanted to make that point. And then the last slide that I wanted to show.
You're on that slide, just so everybody can see. Can you trace the line from the end of the road, the driveway, how it comes up and comes down the shared driveway? Everybody looking at it.
Are you talking about the existing?
Yeah.
This, this area right here that I'm showing you, this area is all an existing paved asphalt driveway. And then there's also a culvert crossing, and that was all completed as part of the work done when the subdivision was originally installed.
And so you?
Do you know how wide the driveway is?
I believe it does. I believe it's at least 14 feet wide, but I have to double check.
It's 14.
Yeah, 14.
So you're proposing to pick that up and then bring it down and then?
Yeah, so the driveway would, would connect to this, the end of where this existing asphalt is, and then would come up. This would be a shared easement, which again, that easement is reflective of, actually, if I didn't want to.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, in regards to the driveway, where you see this light gray hatch pickup that's here, the new asphalt would start, would tie in with the existing driveway, which, you know, is 14 feet there. And then this new shared driveway, it maintains a shared easement until it reaches back onto this parcel. And again, that easement is reflective of what was in the 1991 subdivision approval. As far as other improvements for parcels, as I mentioned before, there's going to be two single-family homes, one developed on each lot. Each site will have its own onsite well and onsite treatment systems, which were approved by the Westchester County Health Department. As far as other improvements for the site, there will be stormwater management practices installed. When we were looking at this site, what we wanted to do with the stormwater management was maintain the existing drainage performance as much as possible. So the majority of the site flows from the east towards the west and down towards the stream. So what we looked at was creating one singular series of stormwater treatment practices to avoid having to put separate practices on each lot and increase the amount of disturbance for the site. The other thing we were looking to do, since these will be single-family homes, was reduce the amount of stormwater infrastructure on the site that would need to be maintained, you know, whether that be catch basins or drainage pipe. So what we're proposing is swales that will run along the roadways and will tie down into the stormwater practice that will allow for the collection of runoff from the new impervious surfaces without having to put them into catch basins and other stormwater infrastructure, which, you know, may be more difficult for homeowners to maintain. Once the stormwater is directed down to this area, it'll first enter a four bay. That'll allow for any sediment laden runoff to filter out and settle and allow for pretreatment for the system before it passes into a bio retention area. The intent of the bio retention area is it functions as a filtering process and allows the site to meet the water quality goals, SWIP. And then finally, for any larger storm events, runoff would then flow over the driveway and into the tented pond. This detention pond allows the reduction of the 110 and 100 year storm event and also allows for meeting the channel protection volume goals, which is, you know, another requirement of the web. So brought a picture to the site. This is what we're looking to do. Obviously, as I mentioned before, there is silt fencing, a construction entrance. There is a clause here mentioning that any areas that have steep slopes exceeding three on one have steep slope stabilization matting. So we're looking to mitigate those impacts when the site is deferred. I believe that's all I had initially, so I don't, I don't know if the board had any questions on that, or would like me to go and tell on any areas.
I was just on, let's just hear from our two consultants. And I'm just, he's not a consultant, so you know what I mean. From our town planner and our engineering consultant.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I think most of the issues related to this application are engineering related, so I would defer to Mr. Robbins on any comments that he adds.
Yeah, thank you. This is very, very helpful to kind of walk through the project and understand what's being proposed. Do you have tabulated, or can you, can you show the extents of the existing wetland and where, and the wetland buffer, and where your stormwater practices are located relative to those?
Sure. But the wetland boundary, this is the, and so the wetland adjacent area, it runs right through here. So the majority of our stormwater practices are within the 100-foot buffer area. Obviously, something that I would have loved to avoid on this site, but given the grading of the site and everything coming down to this area and tying into this stream, it was infeasible for us to direct all this runoff to these impervious areas to a stormwater practice without it being located in this lower, lower lying area. But, but yes, there will be a portion of the stormwater practices that will be within that 100-foot buffer. Just for clarity as well, this is where the DUC's delineated wetlands were. So again, there won't be any, there won't be any disturbance to the, to the wetlands themselves. Everything will be, every disturbance will be limited to within that 100-foot buffer area.
The one of, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
One of the provisions of the town code is mitigation for disturbance in the wetland buffer, so that's something that we can work with you on and try to figure out the best way to implement that on this site. There's a number of ways that we can do that. And I did have the, the opportunity to walk this site with the town engineering technician, Steve Wolfel. The description of steep slopes shown on the plan are definitely accurate, but it is, it is an intimidating sight to try to grade a driveway through, so good, good luck to you. I do, and I don't see any practical way for the stormwater practices to be located anywhere but where they're shown in the wetland buffer. These are open stormwater practices that are being proposed, but that our open space committee does like to comment on, and appropriately so, subsurface infiltrators being proximate to wetlands and potential for conflicts there. And so these are appropriate for the setting on the site. We do have some concerns with whether there are sufficient check dams going down that swale along the driveway, but that's something that we'll pick up in our, in our review and work with you on, just making sure that that, as we're running down that 14%, a long 14% slope with a drop off on the other side, that we're, you have enough room to contain it. I understand why you're using swales, but it's going to be tricky. So we will be issuing a memo on this with technical comments, you know, as we, as we go through the SWIP. But I think this was a good initial presentation to the board, and those are the initial comments that we have.
Thank you.
Did you want to go first?
Is this adjacent to, or in just in close proximity to that parkland over there?
It is adjacent to. Parkland, it lies, lies over here.
Okay. And it, but it also, the parkland comes all the way up to Hilltop, correct?
Yeah, I believe there's a, there's a trail. It's not shown, it might be shown on this plan. May not be on there, but I can, I can add it if not. That was picked up on the survey, but I believe it, I, yes, it's here.
Yeah.
This trail, the trail that's in, actually on this property, but, and then generally, you know, what we've seen for being onsite is how people walk up along this, this area and through that parkland.
Yeah, I would echo Steve's comments about, that's a very challenging site. I mean, it, that the incline on the driveway down and then climbing up on the other side, but you know, it looks like it's, like you're addressing most of those issues, so.
Yeah, we do, we do understand it's a, it's a, it's a challenging site to work with, but we're trying to rely on, you know, that, that shared. you know, that, that shared easement for the driveway that was originally installed and then, you know, any, and mitigation measures for those deep slopes that we can incorporate.
And no, no plans for any changes to the cul-de-sac or anything like that?
No, no modifications there. And there's already a, uh, a driveway, a road cut in there.
Right, right.
Go back to the prior sheet that you were on. My question was, the, the northernmost proposed property, that drive, yes, that sheet, that'll be good. So the check dams that you're referring to are running along the northernmost driveways along it. Is that my correct?
Our question related to, uh, the proposed swale that I think was running on the left side of the driveway.
Correct, because I'm trying to figure in my mind, because I'm not an engineer, the impervious service runoff that's going to run down this steep slope that you can see by the, the line. How is that going to get to the stormwater practice without crossing the road and then causing some sheet flow that could be ice in the winter, et cetera? I'm, I'm just concerned about how that's going to happen.
That is a good point. Um, there is an area here where, where the swales will need to tie in. There is a swell running along here, which ties in, and a swell that runs along the, the property along here. There will be a, there will be a problem, so, uh, perhaps that's something we need to look into, potentially putting a a small shallow culvert, you know, maybe a ductile iron pipe or something that can, you know, maintain a, a lower lower cover, uh, to kind of maintain that, that area.
But I'm not an engineer, but just looking at it, um.
It's tricky.
Yeah.
Other board member comments or questions?
No.
Uh, Steve, I have a question. On the retention ponds with a two-lot, um, project like this, who would be responsible for cleaning those?
The, um, that has to be determined as part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan that's provided to the town for review. There is a, um, a maintenance easement that is put in place on those, uh, that essentially requires the owner to maintain it, and the town has rights to come in to
Okay.
to address it if nee, if it's not being addressed by the homeowner.
So I guess it helps that the owner slash developer is going to live there, so kind of guess you know where we're going with it.
I, I already told them, uh, so yeah, that, that property, right now, the way the SWIP's written, your point, um, you know, it would be the, the way the SWIP's written, it's to the obligation of this northern parcel owner. So I told them he's going to have some work cut out for him, uh, when he's retired, you know, he might have to go up there and things that.
How, um, how big is each of the, uh, plots of land?
So this, this lower parcel is five point one seven seven acres, and this upper parcel is five point five seven four acres, so both about five and change.
And are, are these, uh, both of these plots of land still owned by the same owner from nineteen ninety-one who did the subdivision? Or is that now, you're now the owner? You're now the owner, okay. So you're not going to keep the name that they had on the subdivision?
I left it out of my presentation.
Uh, just asking, you know.
Element, I thought, so.
And, and I saw on there, you're, it looks like a hundred sixty trees you're taking?
A hundred and thirty-nine, yeah, it is, it is a significant number of trees.
Can I follow up on, uh, Mr. Sutton's comment about the trail that runs along the, the northern property line? And I think the survey noted that, that some of that, at least informally, the path runs onto this property.
Adjacent.
Adjacent, okay, that was my question. Okay. Okay, so that, that trail does not come onto this property? Okay, so that's not affected by this project at all?
No.
Steve, I'm looking for some guidance here. We're probably not ready yet for a site walk, because he's going to have to mark some stuff out for us, isn't he?
There are some marks in the field. Uh, the driveway center line, if I recall, is at least marked.
Were you there with, with Steve? What did you think?
I think that there is, I think it is a unique site in, in the context of the steep slopes, and so to the extent that that is in front of the board, I think a site walk is instructive just to understand.
No, I meant, I meant in timing.
Oh.
Might be a little premature.
That's what I was wondering.
We have, we saw that too.
Yeah, everything's marked out.
Enough marked for you?
The wetlands are.
Okay.
The wetland flagging should still be there. It's a, it's a pink ribbon. Um, and I also have photos of something.
Okay, I was getting that, okay.
I, I think it, I think, um, if the board wished to have a site walk, that there's enough marked
Okay.
to see what you need to see.
I'm, make a motion to schedule a site walk. This Saturday, you tell me.
I can't do this Saturday.
Okay.
Next Saturday I could.
Following Saturday? Crack of dawn again?
I don't get to have crack of dawn.
Why? I like the crack of dawn.
I like the crack of dawn, but not every.
I know.
But I could do next Saturday.
Okay.
Which is, what day is it?
The nineteenth.
Eight-thirty, is that still too early? You can't?
Yeah.
It's so steep.
Nine.
Or, yeah. I mean, the road is there. Nine? Nine? Nine o'clock? I, I'm, I'm sorry. It doesn't matter. Eight-thirty, nine, this thirty minutes doesn't change much.
It won't, it won't change for me on that day.
Okay, week from Saturday. What'd you say that was?
Nineteenth.
Eight-thirty or nine, nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay.
Would you like me there to?
Sure.
It's, looks very steep. I think, uh, a safe path, that one is just a safe path.
There is a lot that, uh, the majority of the project can be observed from the culvert at the bottom of the hill, where I think the wetland disturbance is. And if a few folks can, uh, and I'm happy to, to do so as well, walk up that slope to kind of show the alignment of the driveway. And maybe some extra spray paint or extra flags up that center line just to help pick it out of the woods now that we're starting to get some foliage. I don't know that the, that there's a lot of need to get up to the top of the hill. I think bottom, you can see most of it, and to the extent that, maybe we can get some photos of the top of the hill from the applicant, that that would suffice.
Would we be able to gain access to where the proposed, uh, water treatment infiltration runoff?
That's right. That's right off the culvert, yeah, that area.
Oh, easy, that's easy, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we can get as far as we can without endangering anybody.
Right.
You can get to the, at, at least to where the, um, the driveway crosses over the stream. And there's a, there's a little pullout there, right?
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
Nine o'clock on the nineteenth?
Thank you.
Did we need to? Yeah, I made a motion to schedule the site walk.
Oh, second.
We jumped right. Sir, you second it? Yeah.
I'm seconding it now.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. And, yeah, that's okay. Sorry if I was out of order, but. Yeah, and so now we're scheduled. Scheduled. Done, deal.
Um, I just.
We'll send out the notices. Yes, the poll will. Yeah. Yes.
I did, I did have, uh, two other things that I wanted to just ask about
Sure.
with this process. Um, the first thing, uh, was in regards to Seeker. I don't, I don't know if the board's opinion on this is that it meets the definition of a type-two action, which is the construction or expansion of a single-family residence on approved lot, including provisions for necessary utility connections.
How much land are we disturbing? Isn't that one of the triggers?
Not for Seeker.
No.
No?
Okay.
This would be classified as a type-two.
Type-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, um, will a public hearing be required for this project? And if so, uh, when's the soonest we could schedule that?
I'm guessing after the site walk.
Yes.
Yeah.
So would that be the May fourteenth meeting?
You'd have to vote to schedule that.
We'll have, we either vote tonight, schedule it.
Well, we don't have.
But we, but, but I don't, I don't, but we, the applicant has presented any
No.
mitigation, so I think that, that might.
Yeah.
I might advise that it would be premature, but I think that you're.
I would wait till the May.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we'll probably schedule at the May meeting for the following meeting, the June meeting.
Okay.
All right.
There has to be enough information available for the public to be able to review it, to then make meaningful comments and to give us more information. So we just don't have enough information on the table now to confidently be able to say that we'd be ready for that time, but certainly we'll look at it the next meeting.
And I'm sure Steve's going to have some comments that need to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
See you on the nineteenth.
A nice warm sunny day would be great.
Yeah.
True, better.
Yeah. Next on our agenda is ninety-nine Tomahawk Street. It's an application for wetland and water cares, water course protection and stormwater management and erosion and sediment control, town map's twenty-seven dot thirteen, dash one, dash twenty-five, dot one. The project proposes a removal of existing bridge and replacement with a new culvert and temporary access road to serve an existing house. For the record, it's located at ninety-nine Tomahawk Street, Ensign R forty zoning district. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board and town staff. My name is Matt Sorrell with Sorrell Engineering. I'm here tonight representing the property owner, Mr. Robert Manners, the owner of ninety-nine Tomahawk Street. Uh, we're here before your board tonight looking for, as you mentioned, a, uh, wetland permit and for an erosion and sediment control permit. I know that engineering has had the opportunity to walk the site. I do not believe that the board has, though. Uh, the application package, uh, should have included, uh, several photographs to give you some idea of the site setting and what we're proposing to do. Uh, I think it's a relatively straightforward project. Uh, there's an existing house with about a thousand-foot-long driveway going down to, uh, Tomahawk Street, and the driveway crosses an intermittent stream. Normally, there's no flow in it. Uh, there is currently a bridge there, and the bridge is in quite a state of disrepair. Uh, we're concerned about emergency vehicle access, and we would like to replace the bridge with a culvert. Uh, we have sized the new culvert for the, uh, flow that's expected to come down during a fifty-year storm. And we propose to basically just rip out the old bridge. Uh, we're going to, well, prior to doing that, we're going to install a temporary road to maintain access to the property for the homeowner. Uh, then we, then we will rip out the temporary, or the bridge, install the new culvert, and then backfill. Uh, because the intermittent stream i- is, uh, on the, uh, US Henry Court National Wetland Inventory. Uh, so that brings us before your board tonight. Uh, we have been in communication with DEC. We have not received the official, uh, determination of jurisdiction yet. However, our initial conversations with the DEC indicate that they're not going to be interested in, uh, having us obtain a permit from them. Uh, so it looks like the primary, uh, body that we'll be, uh, looking for, uh, approval from is this board.
David, Steve, I have no comments.
We, uh, I did have the chance to walk this site as well, um, with the town's engineering technician, Steve Wolfle, to understand the scope of the work. This is relatively straightforward. It's replacing a, a steel bridge with a culvert. Uh, we have, uh, had some correspondence with the applicant's engineer, uh, around the sizing of that culvert, and I'm comfortable with what they proposed, uh, is adequate, um, for the size of that culvert. Uh, so our comments, uh, were really around making sure that, uh, the applicant, um, obtains a jurisdictional determination from the DEC. And, uh, we had just two minor comments on, on the plans itself. Uh, we had discussed, um, in the field, whether the extent of medium-stone fill was appropriate or should be modified, and you, and you're going to look into that a little bit. Um, and then secondarily, the town has some standard notes that we asked to be applied to plans related to the import of fill. So it, it is, it is straightforward, and I feel that the applicant's, uh, photographs, which were, were, I think, extensive and, and very helpful, um, they do adequately characterize the site. There isn't much else to see other than what was shown in the, in the.
Board member, comments or questions?
Steve, that's a thirty-inch pipe that's proposed?
There's a thirty-inch, and you can explain some of the rationale if, if I mess this up, but it's a thirty-inch pipe, uh, which matches the size of the culvert that crosses under Route one eighteen, Tomahawk Street. Um, this is further upstream than that. Um, and the engineer has prepared some calculations that show the, the runoff from the site and from the uphill parcel, or parcels. Um, there's a stormwater practice up above this, uh, with a detention basin and a controlled outlet, that, uh, the thirty-inch pipe appears by our calculations to be, or by the engineer's calculations to be adequately sized.
Are there any approvals needed from DEP because it's so close proximity to the reservoir?
No, this is, this is a, um, this isn't a repair, but it's close to a repair.
Okay.
And this project does not, uh, have enough disturbance, I don't believe, to trigger the DEP review.
Am I reading too much in your comments? It doesn't sound like we need a site walk.
I think the, certainly that's, that's your, your, um, your right to do so, uh, that the photos describe it.
Okay.
That's really very helpful.
Say that again?
Yeah.
He said, he thought the, the photographs. I, I agree, I, I concur with that. They, it does, I mean, and to your point, it, it appears pretty straightforward. I mean, it's an old bridge, they're going to take it out, you're going to replace it with a culvert. Minimal disturbance, probably not involving DEP, we said, right? Um, so. Would feel comfortable, uh, directing staff to perform, to prepare a resolution?
Yes.
Make a motion that, uh, we direct staff to prepare a confirmatory rev- resolution. Second that. All favor?
Aye.
Evening.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Moving along tonight, you'd think there was a good game on.
Rangers messed that up already.
Evening. Um, next is T-Mobile application for special use permit telecommunications facility at thirty-seven Route one thirty-eight.
Good evening to the board. My name is David Kenny, attorney of Snyder and Snyder, here tonight to represent the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC. Um, the application is ineligible facilities request. Uh, T-Mobile is existing on the, uh, existing tower. Um, it's replacing its equipment, uh, includes replacing three antennas, and, uh, they're all installing r- remote radio heads behind the antennas. These are equipment that help with, uh, transmitting the signal from wider frequency wave to the, uh, to the line that goes into the line. And then there's also some equipment being removed. Obviously, the old, uh, antennas are being removed. The mount is being swapped out. As you can see, the mountain is actually of a more slender profile, so it's actually getting smaller. Um, and then at ground level, uh, there's equipment cabinet being removed and some of the equipment within the equipment cabinet. Um, we did receive, uh, comments from, uh, the board's engineer. Most of the comments, uh, we can respond to in the next submission. However, there are a couple I just wanted to go through real quick. Um, one, uh, was regarding the, uh, request for an environmental assessment short form. Um, the board has for the past, for these applications, uh, deemed these as a type-two action, so we just request a waiver from that requirement. Um, and then there was a, a series of requests for maps depicting existing wireless coverage, report of minimum level service. All of these have, uh, we've discussed on past applications. They're preempted by the federal law for ineligible facilities requests. Uh, they are in the town code, but for, they're more in the town code for a brand-new facility, for a new tower. Um, this being a replacement of existing equipment for an existing carrier. Uh, we don't feel that there is a need for these types of maps or coverage information, and the federal law preempts the, the board or the town from acquiring it, so we do request a waiver from those items as well.
Steve?
Nope, they, you are absolutely correct that that's been a, a, a passed action of the board, and we see no reason why this, this application is any, any different there. Um, the other comments that we have, uh, were just related to, uh, our standard comments frankly on, um, meeting the town code's requirement for inspection, the, the structural calculations were prepared. Um, and we just want to make sure that the basis for that is that the tower is in the condition that that engineer expects it to be in when they, when their calculations. That was the, the other major comment that, that we have. Could, I think you, you alluded to this, uh, you focused on the, the modifications on the tower itself. Are there any modifications at ground level? Uh, that are outside of the perimeter of.
None at all. So like, the only things happening at ground level is they're actually removing existing equipment from the equipment pad, but there's actually no equipment being, new equipment being installed. Uh, they have, with the new upgrade of the, uh, antennas, they have one less equipment cabinet that.
And there's nothing that changes any of the visual screening on the site or on the tower itself?
Absolutely not.
Member comments, questions?
Is there a, a net increase in the equipment on the tower? Is that what I?
So it's same. So there's this six antennas existing, three will remain, and three will be replaced, so it'll stay a six.
And sticks, there won't be dishes or panels?
No, they're panel antennas, so they're, they're up, up and down. And then the radio heads, they're very small boxes that they install behind the antennas. There are actually more TMAs, which are equivalent to radio heads that are there, so those are just being replaced.
Okay, and, and the, the shelter at the bottom of the tower, you're removing a bunch of, uh, radio, I read.
It's one cabinet and then the equipment that's in that cabinet. But we don't actually have a shelter at this one. This one's an open-air pad, but yes, we're, we're just removing some equipment from that pad that's no longer necessary with this upgrade.
Any other comments? I don't, I don't, in my opinion, we don't need a site walk in this either. No.
My, my only comment is, it would be nice if the address was the same on the application and the agenda.
It was, it was actually three different addresses.
The property is known as three different addresses.
Yeah.
It is. It is.
So there's one address for the overall property, which we've had approvals deeming it at that before, and then there's a separate parcel just for the cell tower that's of a separate address.
I'm thinking maybe we should try going forward to maybe put like an all-zone NAS or something, so it's just real just belt and suspenders that is really clear if the agenda is the public notice for the public, that everybody is is understanding where it is.
I'll have that in my future submissions, but this was something where it we've seen it both ways. I picked one, but apparently it wasn't the the right one.
Wasn't both?
Yeah, correct.
It was both, so it wasn't wrong.
Right.
For for everybody's sake, that we just be as clear as we possibly can, given that it's a little bit of a complicated situation. So if we could do it going forward, because you're always coming.
Absolutely. So going forward, we'll make sure to include both sites or address.
Nicole, pick something in from now on.
Is this the IBM property?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Did check with the assessor, and she said that this was assigned its own parcel in the nineties. So that's why we changed it to thirty-seven through one thirty-eight. That's what we're told that it that it.
Thirty-seven, one thirty-eight.
And and the other thing I I'll make a comment. I've visited a lot of these sites. Um, one of the other sites in town, they've recently done a a lot of switch outs on the top, and it appeared as if they the technicians just cut and dropped. And then we accessed the site, and um there was a lot of debris from, you know, the work they did that just landed and left. So if you could ask them to just police the site when they're on their way out, that would be a good.
Absolutely, and I'm sure that would be part of the review of any certificate of occupancy inspection that would have to go as part of the building permits, but I'll make sure to make a another remark to our contractors.
Good.
Uh, the only other request for the board is just a a request for a waiver of a public hearing.
Yes.
We can waive the uh make a motion, we waive the public hearing.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Also, um, direct staff to prepare a confirmatory resolution, please. Or second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you so. Thank you. Have a great night.
I I would recommend a board. Sidewalk. Um, also vote to waive the requirements in our memo, uh, which would be three, uh, four A through D. And uh, sorry, four A through E.
And you've typically done that in the past for these types of applicants.
Do we have to read what those are, or can we just make a notation?
I thought in the previous, the board has, you know, waived the the town code requirements.
Okay.
Uh, in our memo, in reference, three and four.
Well, I make that motion to to waive the references in three, three A and four. That's three. Town code or whatever the language should be.
Town code, one seventy dash one nine eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, counselor.
And Mr. Chairman, just to follow up too, uh, I'll make sure that uh Mr. Tuma, the building inspector, um, is aware of the issue that
Mr. Sutton brought up.
Mr. Sutton brought up with respect to leaving debris and materials uh from a from a job site.
And actually, why don't you two chat after?
Yeah.
About the site you're talking about.
It would.
Yeah, I was gonna ask exactly that. Do you know the exact site you're talking about? Because I heard a lot of them. I can try to see if I can get someone.
Uh, it's the site on Route one hundred down across opposite uh seven eleven.
Is that the one twenty-one?
Amato Farm.
Oh, the Amato, the Amontopan?
Yeah, and um while they're there, I don't know who has responsibility for site access, but the gate is falling apart.
Be Mr. Amato, but I I'll.
So.
But let me see if I can get back to the people who have last worked on that site and see if we can get them to do anything for it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you.
Last on our agenda is a referral by the town board of Somers of zoning map amendment. It's requested by North Edge Realty Corporation. The town board declared themselves lead agency as part of a coordinated review for application petition for the rezoning of approximately fifteen point six two acres of real property with an address of twenty-nine, forty-three, and forty-five New York State Route six and five country line road from R forty to an R eighty residential district um for multifamily residents in Baldwin Place, which is the NFRBP district, and this is the construction of seventy-seven multifamily units, including fifteen percent affordable units and recreation amenities. Is this gonna be a pool for the town?
No pool on the.
Okay.
My good evening. My name is Jared Boniello, owner of the property. Uh, Tim Allen with Bibbo Associates is engineering the property. Um, we're here, like you stated, um, referral by the town board for our zoning amendment. Uh, we're currently finishing up the process to have a zoning overlay applied to the property for the multifamily residence Baldwin Place. Um, we're gonna be coming to you shortly after we get through the zoning overlay amendment change. Um, so part of what I was gonna do tonight is give you an overview of the project, um, just so that you're refreshed with it, because it's been a few uh few meetings since we were with you. The property is located at the intersection of Route six and Baldwin and Mayapack Avenue. It is currently seventy-seven units with a fifteen percent affordable component. This, as I said, it's gonna conform with a multifamily zone um for the area, which actually falls within a few thousand feet of that particular intersection. Uh, the project is gonna have access from two different locations, one on Route six and one off of Mayapack Avenue. Um, traffic studies were conducted to uh alleviate unnecessary traffic onto Route six, so there is gonna be restrictive turning in and out of this development. Uh, the property is plateaued. There is a high point. All the buildings and roadways and green spaces are located up on the top area, and we utilize the lower areas for our storm basins. That's the gist of this project. Um, I guess I just wanted to get your uh give you an overview and discuss getting something back from you for the town board for our zoning proposition.
Dave?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, members of the floor. So um the applicant, just to by way of background, um, they uh went through the notice of intent to be lead agency. You were notified of that. They came in, they made a presentation. Um, they've prepared their environmental assessment form. It's been reviewed in detail by town staff um and the town board, and that was accepted as acceptable for public comment. And that's the reason that the the town board is holding the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments. As Mr. Boniello had mentioned uh at some point, similar to the Trailside application, they will be back uh before your board for this specific site plan application, where you start gonna start to get into a lot more of the details. So uh this matter is referred to you uh as part of New York State town law, as part of the um, the town of Somers Code, where there are zoning amendments. Um, there's a referral to your board for review and comment. Uh, the town board has a public hearing schedule on the zoning, has a public hearing scheduled uh for tomorrow night. Um, so that's the 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 timing is fortuitous, and then it gives you an opportunity to um review the application and provide the town board. You could direct staff to prepare a memo if you have any comments that we could provide to the town board with respect to the zoning uh map amendments that will allow this particular project to move forward.
Okay. Steve, you don't, it's too early for comments, right? Board member questions or any questions that you would like us to refer to the town board? Our thoughts, ideas?
Well, one foolish question I have is where is County Line Drive on that map?
County Line Drive, which is exactly as it sounds, the county's border, is right here. This is the northern edge of the property. Where's our comment?
It's actually back back here.
Yeah.
If you recall, before this came to the board, uh, before we got involved in the development, as we went in for a lot line change.
That's I found my old papers. Yes.
So that was the lot line change that created this back lot. This lot used to be here, back here. So howdy line road is.
Okay.
One property removed from the back.
Okay.
Intersection of Mayapack Avenue and Route six, this is the tool nut, as it exists right now. I should have pointed that out.
You've got the tool nut and the church. We're coming through the church property as a secondary access. I'm pretty sure you saw that towards the end of our discussions where we came in primarily with this board. Um, to create the second access and allow for just the uh the left-hand turns out of the properties. Um, I'm sorry, the yeah, the uh it would be a not crossing Route six is coming out of the property, the proposal there. And procedurally, as they've said, this is very similar to what Trailside is doing. We're about a month behind them, so that we'll be back before you site plan and and uh subdivision similar to them. Um, one thing that we did want the board to consider uh as we contemplate coming back here, probably maybe early June, um, hopefully wrapping up the town board in the next month or so, uh that you consider a sidewalk for maybe late May, early June, uh to get that out of the way. We're gonna be back before you, uh, full bore, uh, when we're done with the town board.
And we hear you're fond of Saturday walks, so I have a couple of I have a couple earmarked at the latter part of May.
Would you mind going over the egress and and ingress just one more time?
Yes.
What which is which is the prohibited terms and which way which way would you commit and the prohibited?
The thought is to not have anybody sitting on Route six trying to turn left into this particular property.
Okay.
Coming into Somers, right? So to get into this development from the Taconic, which is down here, or from this part of Jefferson Valley, the thought is you'd utilize the traffic light and come in through our new.
Okay.
Down here.
Gotcha.
You are going to be able to take a right out of there, because we would be adding in an entry ramp, sort of speak, to be able to access.
Okay.
Six more safely. And conversely, coming in, getting in here from the right hand, come from this direction, shouldn't be a problem.
Right, right.
Enter.
Okay.
That's that's the idea of all the two acts.
Gotcha.
But you can't make a left turn and go.
There will be left. You can see this little island that was created by Bibbo to make it a um a barrier, so to speak. There will be no ability to go left.
Okay.
Is it secondary?
Try.
Um, access.
But he'll try to.
Is that a uh did you pro- did you buy that problem?
We have, we we worked with the church to obtain an easement for that, and there will be a uh a shared drive there.
Are there any improvements needed for that driveway? This is more site plan comment than anything else.
We have some catch basins showing up up a portion of that. So I'm widening it certainly. Right now, it's just a driveway, so it will be brought up to a to twenty-two foot or whatever we're proposing for the development there.
And that driveway goes between the church and uh the the residence house?
That resident there is actually a church property. Yes, it's it splits between one of the church's homes that they own and and maintain and operate and the actual church itself. Yes. Yes, sir.
While there's no left turn for vehicles coming out of the property onto six, and I understand that, will there be a sidewalk heading along that way toward Bobo's, which is a very popular destination at that intersection?
This is something that the planning board, I'm sure, is going to have many opinions on, but yes, we jumped ahead of you and added a sidewalk up to the intersection of Route six and Mayapack Avenue.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Hmm.
I would say at this point, we can make a motion for staff to prepare a memo, town board, that we didn't really have substantial comments. I don't know how we would word that, but.
No objections to the proposed rezoning to the MFRBP.
Yeah, I'd make that motion that they prepare that for the town board.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And as Mr. Allen asked, can we put something in the books for June, Saturday, June seventh?
You mean for a sidewalk?
Would be nice to have it on the calendar, so we don't uh get boxed out of that June meeting. I'd love to have eyes on that plan on being back before you.
I'll be out of town, but.
Or any Saturday or weekday in that gen.
Yeah, if you can have some some flags up, or just give us ideas and things. Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm just one, obviously.
I'm okay. Fourteenth.
This is this is a subdivision sidewalk, not a site plan site, or is it?
Well, I believe so.
Basically both.
Basically both.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, uh, because I would prefer to have the engineer there. We know that you're not available on the seventh, but if if other folks don't agree with that, I'll go with the majority.
I'd rather have Steve be there.
Yeah, me too.
I'd rather. See how popular you are?
Sorry, pal.
It's no offense to you, but you know.
Yeah. You don't need to look at it. Be the engineer there.
Is the fourteenth too late to be in before the June meet? When's the June?
The eleventh.
The eleventh. That's after.
Meeting's the eleventh, but this this is not gonna be a one meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, but the the fourteenth or go back to the thirty-first, I think either's.
Yeah, fourteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just hoping to have the sidewalk out of the way before came back in full, because that way it's, you know, well, they come back and take a look.
You may end up with two meetings, two town board meetings, too. You don't know, right?
Well, that's what we're we're planning on.
Okay. So the fourteenth? Okay, six fourteen.
Nine AM?
Yep. Flagged it.
Uh, make a motion that we schedule a sidewalk for um June fourteenth, nine o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gonna meet. Where do you suggest we park?
Tool nut now.
No, that's that's tight. The the church, the Yorktown Assembly of God, the parking lot right next to the uh, they have a playground back there.
Big park.
Yeah.
That's on Mayapack Avenue, right off of Mayapack.
Got that, Nicole?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Any other board member comments, suggestions? All right, our next meeting is um May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Make a motion adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.